Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a guest tonight. Ms. Rhonda Phillips from the Professional Educators Association has a request for us. Good evening.
On behalf of Anderson County Education Association, I respectfully submit this letter and a close signature of signatures from the professional employees of Anderson County Schools as an official request to continue collaborative conferencing under the Professional Educators Collaborative Conferencing Act. The Anderson County Education Association stands ready and prepared to continue working collectively with the Anderson County Board of Education. We respectfully request the continuation of collaborative conferencing and intend to work diligently in revising and renewing our current memorandum of understanding. We would like once again to conduct a confidential survey of certified employees to poll will consist of two questions. The first would be if the certified employee wants to continue collaborative conferencing with the board, and if they answer yes, the second question would ask the employees to indicate the organization that they would like to represent them in collaborative conferencing. We appreciate the board's willingness and consideration to consider the mutually beneficial collaborative problem-solving process.
All right. Thank you.
And this is how this is.
Yeah, we'll need a motion to continue our collaborative conferencing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we allow the education organization to conduct a survey concerning continuing collaborative conferencing.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? I would say we're glad to continue that. That's been a good thing.
Yes.
Yep, yep. So we're glad to have that. Okay. No other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That is done. Thank you. No one signed up tonight to be heard, so we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Are you all wanting to speak?
Anybody here wanting to speak?
Okay, okay. Just Mike and Chair.
Yeah, okay. Let me, and I'll remind everybody while we're here and since we don't have anybody, in order to speak before the board, you have to contact the director's office a week, is it a week in advance? So that helps us to know what you want to talk about, so. Moving on. I hear motion to approve the agenda and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda. We have on it tonight the minutes from the last meeting, the human resources report, the student services report, field trips for approval, policies for second reading, which are the ones we approved on first reading last month, the emergency preparedness plan, student transportation management, student admissions, and student health services. We also have the expenditure report, which we may talk about later, but for now, we'll approve it, and then Clinton Middle and Clinton High School basketball schedules. Anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. There is no executive approval, so we'll move on to comments from the chair. I did want to thank everybody who was able to go to the fall district meeting on September 24th down in Greenback. That's where we were. We had a great presentation, I thought, from our TSBA folks, a preview of the legislative session, possibility of a new bill for maintenance of efforts, shortfalls. We don't have that problem, but some counties apparently do, and also an idea for capital projects trust, statewide trust for, to fund some capital projects for schools. So those are interesting things that we decided to at least look into a little further. We also had informational sessions on TESA and the third grade proficiency, TESA and school letter grades, AI in public schools, TSSAA and student eligibility, and then we talked about teacher shortages. So it was a very informative meeting for us, and we're all a little smarter and a little better for it. So I did get a notice tonight that's kind of preliminary. The Intergovernmental Committee from the county commission has decided to have a joint workshop with Anderson and Roan Counties to talk about the new facility that's being built in Oak Ridge. So that will be Friday, November 15th at 9:00 a.m., and it'll be Anderson County and Roan County Board of Commissioners and Anderson and Roan County School Boards. So we're all invited to that. We'll get you more information. We don't know where, anything about it, but mark your calendar, Friday, November 15th at 9:00 a.m. All righty, the next items are the above and beyond awards. Make sure you have the right list, above and beyond. So we'll start with, this month, we're honoring our custodians. So Darren, if you'd start tonight.
From the Anderson County Career and Tech, we have Michael Gorman. From Anderson County High School, we have Jeff Carroll. Andersonville Elementary, we have Merritt Walden Jr. Riceville Elementary, Erica Barnett.
And I have from Claxton Elementary, Becky Jeffers. Clinton Middle School, Mark Poore.
And I have from Clinton High School, Felix Caldwell. And from Clinch River, John Faust. And from Dutch Valley Elementary School, Ashley Cox.
Okay. From Fairview Elementary, David Sellers. And from Grand Oaks Elementary, Jaren Gibson. From Lake City Elementary, Marshall Violet. And Lake City Middle, Ronnie Silcox. From Norris Elementary, Eevee Holcomb. And from Norris Middle, Allison Turner.
And from Norwood Elementary, we have Wilma Hall. And Norwood Middle School is Julie Bridges.
Central Office, Ricky Silcox. Preschool, Dennis Rushlow.
Okay. Congratulations to all those custodians, above and beyond. Checks in the mail. Next item is to honor our perfect attendance award winners, and we'll start with Mr. Cardon once again.
From Clinton Middle, we have Graham Richardson. Lake City Elementary, Patricia Klein.
And I have from Lake City Middle School, John Lamorex.
And I have from Norris Elementary School, Ashley Cox. And from Lake City Elementary, Emma Hyde.
Also from Lake City Elementary, Erin Alstead. From preschool, Taphne Ridenhour. And Lake City Elementary, Martha Gilliam.
And from Clinton Middle School, we have Jason Terry.
And from Lake City Elementary, Janice Rothner.
All right. Congratulations to our perfect attendance folks this month. It's always a challenge to read names.
Always get the hard ones.
Always get the hard ones, that's right. We'll move on to our comments from our student board members. Did y'all flip a coin to see who goes first?
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and go first.
Go for it, Keith.
So, of course, we've got fall break coming up next week, and then the week after fall break, that Thursday, we have our NHS, National Honor Society induction, where we induct sophomores, juniors, and seniors who've met their requirements. Our marching band will be competing at the Band to America competition on October 19th. We're traveling all the way out to Johnson City for that one. So the Clinch River Classic was about two weeks ago. It was a huge success. We received a lot of positive feedback from all the bands that came, and it was a great fundraiser. The Lady Dragon soccer team had their senior night on Monday, and Lady Dragon volleyball is having their senior night tonight at 7:30, I believe. The Dragons play AC tomorrow at AC. The Homecoming Dance, which was held on our game against Campbell County, no Powell, oh, it was Powell. It was a great success. We had a great turnout, and Burville Sweet Treat provided root beer floats. The Dragons will take on the North City over fall break. Our high school's DECA chapter took three officers to the High Dolly Conference at Dollywood on Monday. This was a officer skill building event, and DECA chapters from all over Tennessee were there. And then, most recently, today, the school held grade level meetings in partnership with junior achievement to, they had business men and women come out and speak to the different classes on topics of the Paris for Future. Seniors were talked to by Ms. Lori Wilson, and she talked to us about credit scores and their performance.
Thank you, Keith.
So there's not much to report from AC. A lot of ours align, so, but everyone is super excited for fall break. Our seniors also took the ACT, and the sophomores took the grade ACT on Tuesday. Last Wednesday, our NJRTC had one of their first year old meets of the season, and tomorrow we play against the Dragons at 7:30, and I would like to invite everyone out because we're also still collecting money and water to give to our friends up in the neighborhood.
Predictions on the game? Y'all got a bet going?
I think we're gonna start one.
Maybe you have to wear the other team's jersey or something to the next board meeting? I don't know. All right. Thank you all. We appreciate you being here. Next item is the director's report.
Kate, I have a, hopefully it's not too lengthy, but as you know, we've had, over the last month, had a rash of threats to our schools, and so I just wanted to kind of take a minute and back up and really thank the district attorney's office and the sheriff's office for their support, and, you know, any time there's a threat made, there's requirements that a school system has to do. So one of the laws require that our leaders, we have to conduct a threat assessment, and that is a team that is at every school. It has the principal, it has the SRO, and it has a mental health person in there. And so there's a lot of things that go into that threat assessment, and they have to have guidance how to recognize if it is a threat to them, and there's a lot of home visits go into that. And sometimes people want to know what happens to that, and the problem is the provided, the information to the LEA, it's considered, it's considered, my mind just went off. It's considered confidential, and it's not provided to the public, and because there's a lot of things in our safety plans that are not provided to the public. So that's why there's not a lot of information that goes out of that. But we work closely with the district attorney, we work closely with the sheriff's office to make sure that we truly vet every one of those threats, because we don't say they're credible or not credible, they're a threat, and we want to make sure that we do everything we can to keep our students safe. So again, I want to thank our staff and our administration and everybody for going through that, because it was kind of like September 11th, it just went kind of crazy for about a week and a half. And so just to let the parents and everybody know, some of those students that made those threats are still in juvenile detention. And so the DA takes it seriously, the sheriff's office takes it seriously, and we take it seriously. So we would ask the parents to make sure they talk to their students and say, you know, it's not a joke to make a threat at a school. Another thing, as you know, a big storm last week that a lot of people really devastated of our East Tennessee friends, and just want to show a couple of pictures here. Here are some of our students helping unload water up in Greene County, and then here is another one of Anderson County High School. I really want to thank Anderson County High School and their community up there. They've took two tractor trailer loads of water to them. They've got another one almost full. They'll be taking it tomorrow. The community can drop off water or supplies at Anderson County High School. The other thing we've done as a school system, we've asked every student to bring in a dollar and every staff member to bring in five dollars, and we're working in those. We've been in touch with our friends in Greene County and Cock County. We'll be sending that directly to them. A lot of times when you send it through people, that money kind of gets stuff taken off of it, and we want it every bit to go to the students, so we're working with those two school systems. The, back to the right one now. The other thing, just to let you know, update on the softball field, I'm sure that if Teresa hears, she would ask that question. The lights have been readjusted and were tested Monday night, and we've got an agreement to proceed on. They are working on right now laying out the concession stand to get that completed. Design Innovation is completing the drawings on the locker rooms, and we hope to start on that construction next month. The AC complex, that has a few hiccups in it, so we pushed that bid opening out till October the 15th. So if you don't know what that is, that is a multi-use facility that will be built on Anderson County campus, kind, about the same kind as on Clinton's campus, to where they can, the whole community can be part of that. Claxton School, I guess this is the one I'm most excited about, that we are ready to present to the full commission, and we will be doing that on October the 21st at nine o'clock. I had a meeting this morning with MBI to kind of finalize that. They have a really neat way to do things. They can, they have a 3D composite of the school, so you can walk through the new school and look at it, look at the colors and things like that. So it was really amazing when you start looking at it. It makes it real. But we'll do that on the 21st, but then on the 14th, before that, the finance committee with the courthouse, they will be working with Cumberland Securities to secure our bond issue for $20 million. We're gonna do two. We're gonna do a $10 million and then another $10 million as we go through this process. They also have been working with some construction companies to kind of get a pre-bid, so we can really hone in on what the price is going to be, and if there's anything, what they do is they pull these companies in, and we have a great, they have a great partnership with them, and they'll look at the drawings, they'll say, well, if you move this wall the way, if you move this wall or you do this, that could save you $100,000. So here's what I would do. And so they're looking at it to make sure it's cost efficient and things like that. But we are still on track to start, to start in January, so.
We're gonna have groundbreaking ceremony?
We will have a big groundbreaking ceremony for that one. You are exactly right. The other thing that I just want to talk about is, I'm gonna make sure, and I think sometimes people don't realize as a board, what y'all do as a board. So through your budget, and to let people know, the school board allocates money for each school, and it's done by the number of students we have on each school, and they allocate $10,000 to every school, and the principal and their committee, they decide what they want to do with that funds. Sometimes they use it for field trips, sometimes they use it for, to buy a different curriculum that they want to do. They can use it for anything, for field trips. It is just things that are outside the scope of maybe what a school does. They can hone in, like Norris Elementary may hone in on their arts and do a little bit more for that. So that's just part of it, but then we also put in allocations for art, music, band, library. This year, we even added a K-8 PE funding. So all of those things go directly out to the schools, and the schools, we call it site-based management. They decide how to use that, how best to allocate those funds, and those funds, if they're not used this year, we hope this year's funds are used on this year's, but sometimes there's a big project, they'll carry it over, so those funds stay with the school. So this year, we were about $400 under three quarters of a million dollars. So that three quarters of a million dollars goes out to the schools. And they, the schools have already received those checks, and they have deposited those checks, so they're ready to use those things. So that, that's above and beyond all of our technology money that we do, and all of our curriculum, and our textbooks and things like that. This is money outside that, you know, sometimes they just need a little extra help to do things. The other item we had mentioned was a report that is our, sorry, wrong one.
It's over the top, under the consent.
Right here.
Yep.
This is a 141 expenditure report for people out there, if they want to look at it. This is our expenditures to budget that we've done so far. This was as of 9:30, 24. So they can look and see what the budget is, and we can see how much we've spent of that, how much percent we've had on that, and how, everything we do, anything we do has to go through this budget process. So it's just another way to be transparent. And that is all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Barrett. The expenditure report will always be under the consent agenda, so anybody wants to go look at it. We did meet in workshop on Monday, and we talked about several things. I don't think there's anything in the minutes that we need to go over. We did hear, we had Rick Scarborough, the Republican candidate for state representative, came, and we grilled him, as we had done in back us the month before. So both candidates have been equally grilled by us, so we appreciate both of them being willing to come and speak to us. So we'll move on to the financial report, which may be the shortest ever.
We have one appropriation, and it is appropriation to Utrust funds for Preschool in the amount of $250.
All right.
And that has to be a roll call vote.
Is there a motion to approve the appropriation 1A?
So moved.
Second. And a second. All right, thank you. So this is, any discussion about that? $250? Okay. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Cardon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillam Waters?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And Ms. Wheat?
Aye.
We have.
Just enough for a miracle. We had just enough votes for the quorum.
Yes. We had two transfers. Those were also from Preschool. We had 2A was a transfer for travel expenses in an amount of $145, and 2B was Preschool transferred for other contracted services in an amount of $40.
All right. Motion to approve the transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. That's it for the finance report.
That is it for the finance report.
All right. Now we've got a couple of calendars that we need to approve. Actually, it's the same calendar in three different forms.
Yes.
So this is the calendar for 25-26 school year. We saw these Monday night. Any, oh, we'll get to that. Any questions come up from anybody since Monday night?
Let me get back to that. And it, basically, it's the same calendar from this year. It's got all the same breaks in it. The only difference, there's one day difference. Next year, there's not an election in November, so we come back a day later in January than we did this year. So it's pretty, you have to have so many days in first semester and so many in second semester, so it kind of puts us where it is.
All right. Is there a motion to approve that 25-26 calendar? There's a motion? Is it second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Great. Anything else to come before the board tonight? If not, we'll be adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Another.
See you next meal.
See you next meal.